Okay, I'd like to call a meeting of the November 30th Board of Education meeting to order. The first item of business is if we could review and approve the agenda, there's one minor typo on the agenda. The date in the action item should be the 16, 17 budget assumptions, and then again in the announcements in future meetings, it should also be 16, 17 public school calendar. Beyond that?
Actually, I'm sorry. It's the 17, 18 calendar, but the seven, it should be 16, 17 budget assumptions for the second read. And I'll clarify that when we do the announcements.
Okay, perfect. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Senkita? Sherri, second? All those in favor? It's unanimous? Moving on, could I get, we have the minutes from our November 16th meeting, if you could review those that are in front of you? And if you have any additions or corrections, let us know, or if I can get a motion to approve the minutes from the November 16th meeting. Sherri West, may I have a second? Senkita? All those in favor? Okay. That's unanimous as well. Moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who'd like to make comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. And we're going to start with a statement of accounts with Dr. Keating.
Well, and as we, I'm sorry, but as we jump into this, just so you know, tonight at 7:30, the Saks Building Committee is presenting to the town council, looking for their approval for the expansion and renovation project. That's been discussed for a while. So, Dr. Keating is going to start going through the statement of accounts here, but by 7:15, I've promised the chair and co-chair of the Saks Building Committee that Dr. Keating will be on her way over to the town hall for the Saks Building Committee meeting. So if there are questions that come up as we're looking at the statement of accounts, you know, feel free to jot them down and we can discuss them next week, or you can always send them to me, of course. Sorry, Dr. Keating, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, and good evening. You have the statement of accounts before you for the end of October. Through that period, we have spent over 90.5% of the budget in either actual expenditures or encumbrances, and so we have a balance of a little bit over 9% to expend between now and the end of the year. There were a few encumbrances that were placed over the last month that dealt with insurances, and so you'll see those in the statement of accounts. And also, you'll notice that there are a few accounts that show negative balances, but I'd like to point out that there are encumbrances on those negative balances, which means that the money has not actually been spent yet. So as we go through the reforecast for budgeting for 2017, we're going to be reanalyzing all of the accounts within the budget and reforecasting those accounts, so some of those minuses may go down or may go up. So at that point in time, we will ask for a transfer between all of the accounts to true them up for this current year. In the meantime, we do have some transfers on the statement of accounts for this month that are necessary for operations. And the first one deals with the facilities accounts. As you know, earlier this year, we had made a rather significant transfer between accounts within the facilities department because of the testing that was required for the lines, oil lines at both east and south, and there was some remediation that was required as a result of that. There was also costs associated with repairing the tanks, and so we did need to move another $20,000 for that work, and that transfer is included in this report. There's a small transfer here for South School, for the library. There's also a transfer here for pupil services for the Orton-Gillingham Training Program, and that is really to reclassify expenses that were budgeted under professional development to the consultancy account. There's another small transfer for the African unit under curriculum. There's a transfer under pupil personnel services, and this really is for tutoring contracted services. It was budgeted under the salary account, and we are contracting out for some of those services. So we're trying to really true up where we're actually spending our funds to the proper accounts, and this is one of those categories for tutoring. There's a transfer here for $13,000 for school climate expenses, and that again is a transfer between, a reclassification between accounts. It's not a new expense to the budget, but it's taken money from professional development to the consultant line item. And then finally, under digital learning, you budgeted $10,000 for accessories for things like assistive technology, and they really are small items like $100, $200 items that really belong in the supply account, so we moved those funds to facilitate those purchases. And there's one other final thing that I did want to bring to your attention. The tuition out of district account currently with known expenses is showing $124,520 over expenditure. It's on page four. We're going to be watching that account very closely, Darlene and I, and we do expect that we're going to be requiring additional funding in that account as we move through the year. Now, as we go through the reforecast, and if there are funds available, at that time we will transfer into that account. But if we do need additional funding, it is something that we're going to have to keep an eye on, because we will have to access the excess cost from the town if we need to.
Are there any questions for Dr. Keating before she has to go? Senkita?
Jen, I just had a question underneath the certified salaries. You have a nonrepresented staff item. What does that actually mean, nonrepresented staff?
They're not covered by a collective bargaining unit.
Okay.
So they're nonrepresented.
All right. And so is that?
For example, myself, we have personal services contracts, so we're not represented by a union.
Many members of the technology department, some secretaries at the central office, folks like that are nonrepresented.
Most of central office is nonrepresented.
So I noticed that there was, you know, a good chunk that's in the negative in that? Does that just mean we had more people in that area than we predicted, or?
Well, I think what's happened, and one of the things that we're doing with Munis is we're really taking a look at how salaries are coded, where every individual is coded within our chart of accounts. In fact, we just had a review done a couple of weeks ago, and as we go through the reforecasting for this budget, some of those funds are going to shift between accounts. Bottom line, as you can see, we have ample funds within our salary account to cover all uncovered salaries. It's just how we're classifying them between the accounts that we want to fine tune, and I know Nancy went through quite a bit of that in the last year, but we're continuing to go through that process, because we have quite a few employees, as you can well imagine, that have to be categorized correctly. It's so important for so many reasons in terms of reporting, not only locally, but to the state and federal government. So I think by the end of next month, perhaps the January report at the latest, we'll have all of those reclassifications completed and a transfer before the board to acknowledge those transfers.
Sure. As we, if you recall, as we were going into the conversion into the in-house payroll, we were talking about something we called position control. And so now that we're using the in-house payroll, what we're able to do is person by person, account by account, go through and just make sure that they're all classified and coming from the right subcategory underneath the salaries piece. So this is that next step that the in-house payroll allows us to do, and to get that granular for each account and each thing. And it goes even beyond the salary accounts into stipends and other pieces. I mean, there's really quite a bit that goes through each, you know, each, every other week, the 15th and the 30th, as the payrolls occur. So it's really that level of detail that bringing the payroll in-house through Munis has enabled us to do.
Sherri?
Juman, so just going back to the out-of-district tuition, I know historically, like, the communication and the transfer process hasn't been ideal with the town. I'm just wondering if that has improved, and if there's any, like, in this case, where we're anticipating that we're going to need more funds for this account and more funds, therefore, to be processed through the excess cost grant, if we've already given them a heads up on that, or what type of communication we've had with the town on that?
Well, I think it's appropriate to go through the reforecasting process first, because we want to look within our budget to see if there's anywhere else in the budget that we can possibly move funds into that account. If we're not able to after that process, understanding there's a lot of unknowns and we have to account for them, then I think at that point in time, within a month or so, we should inform the town that there's a possibility, as we move to the end of the year, that we may need additional funding. And mind you, if this is what we know of right now, it's very possible that new needs can come up between now and the end of the year, which would increase this potential shortfall.
But as we began last year, tomorrow morning, if you have a chance to review, if the survey will answer the questions, we'll be sending it out to the Board of Finance, the Town Council, First Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, and everybody else, but we'll see the same report. And so there is that communication piece as well.
All right. But a formal transfer request, we'll go through a process, I think, in another few months, if it's necessary. Any other questions? Okay, well, then we'll let you go. Be very important. Thank you, Dr. Keating.
Yeah, 7:14, so you can walk to your car. And please text us the results as the night goes on. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we are privileged to have with us two representatives from CAPE, the Connecticut Association of Board of Education. We have Patrice McCarthy and Sheila McKay. If you could, to the podium.
Do you need us to be at this microphone?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much for inviting us. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about what we foresee in the upcoming legislative session, because we understand that you have a desire to be even more engaged in advocacy efforts, and we applaud that. Legislators need to hear the voices of local school board members, as well as superintendents and other administrators. So you play a very important role, and you're represented by a number of legislators, some of whom have experience as school board members, and I know that some of you have, you know, personal relationships with them, and we encourage you to expand those relationships, develop those relationships, and legislators really do rely on you for information on how issues that they are considering impact our students and our schools. And they don't necessarily always have time to initiate the contact with you, so you should feel free to initiate the contact with them. We hear that over and over again, because things do, as the session moves on, and this is thankfully a short session of the legislature, beginning on February 3rd, ending in early May, we hope. We'll talk a little bit about the upcoming special session, but I don't want to start with that. So we have two documents in front of you. We'll start with the one that is labeled 2015 Task Forces. We're not going to talk about each of these in detail, but we're just going to highlight on a couple of them that will most likely be raised as issues in the upcoming legislative session. It used to be that task forces met for a very finite period of time. Now we have task forces that go on for years, so just because they've been created does not mean that those issues will necessarily be addressed in the 2016 session. The first one of those, an Act Concerning Student Assessments, this public act created the Mastery Examination Committee, and we are charged with looking, as you can see from the charge detailed here, at all of the statewide testing, as well as the time spent in individual school districts on student assessment. You can see that we have, I represent CAPE on this group, as well as Richard Murray, who's the immediate past president of CAPE and a member of the Killianley Board of Education. So we have to issue an interim report by February 15th of 2016, but our final report is not due until the following year, January of 2016. The Commissioner of Education, Diana Wensel, is the convener of this group and is a very active participant in each of our meetings, and so we're not only looking, we're looking at assessment, we're also looking at the potential changes in federal law and federal requirements with the impending reauthorization of ESEA, and so all of that is on the table. So we're getting presentations, we've had presentations from experts at the College Board, and so this is, we're looking at the range of issues that we need to consider over the course of the next 12 to 13 months. The next one, when you look at the, an act that's implementing the state budget, you might think, oh, well, that just deals with actually distributing the money in the state budget, but, oh, no, this bill also contains the creation or recreation of the high school graduation task force. This task force existed several years ago. We issued a report. The legislature didn't take any action on that report, but they have continued to postpone the implementation of the high school graduation requirements, currently slated to apply to the class graduating in 2021. The reason they have continued to postpone them is current thinking leads us to believe that those additional requirements that were put in statute are not necessarily going to enhance the high school experience for many of our students. So we are looking at what those requirements are. We actually have a field trip scheduled on Thursday, where members of that task force are going to New Hampshire, to look at a high school that has implemented a personalized learning system, to see how they've done that and what that looks like in the school setting. The legislature also threw two very specific things into our charge, whether there should be CPR training as a high school graduation requirement, and whether you should be able to substitute participation in intrascholastic athletics for the physical education credit. We've had presentations on both of those issues. I can assure you particularly around the issue of the athletic credit, it's clearly an issue on which reasonable people can differ strongly, as a matter of fact. So we, those are issues that are part of our charge. We don't necessarily have to make a recommendation on them. We're going to consider them, and we'll see where that takes us. This task force does have a January 1st reporting deadline. We are going to ask for a one-month extension and anticipate that we'll make a report in early February. This is a task force that either the legislature needs to take up the substance of it, or we're going to be encouraging them to yet again do a one-year postponement of the new requirements.
The next public act you have there is dealing with the task force on life-threatening food allergies in schools. This is a task force that hasn't yet met. We have an appointment to this, Michelle Koo from Newtown. She doesn't have a child with any illnesses at all, but will be representing the school board point of view. This is an issue that we're anxious to see how they get into this issue in terms of board policy, in your board policies.
All right. The budget piece, I think we probably don't.
That's the planning.
Right. You want to talk about public health? While we're on allergies and food and?
Yeah, we're skipping over a number of them that have not yet met. They're supposed to have, but they haven't. We can't report on what they haven't done. The next bill here is on page four, an Act Concerning Various Revisions to the Public Health Statutes. This is another task force on, well, this one is specific to child nutrition task force. They have only made one appointment so far, but this specifically does deal on healthier options for school meals. We've talked to a couple of different entities, the Y and different groups, in terms of some of the understanding going into schools and physical education and nutrition and so forth. So again, until they meet, we're not sure who's on it and what kind of decisions they'll make. Today, the next bill down, an Act Concerning Teacher Certification Requirements for Shortage Areas, Interstate Agreements, Teacher Reciprocity. This group met for the second time today. It is made up of educators from the higher education system, the RESC system, where else? Two or three legislators, one of which is an administrator at a magnet school. There's probably nine or 10 people on this task force, and one of them being Sarah Barzy, Dr. Barzy, from the State Department of Education. They are looking at a quick turnaround, because they do want to report out by February 1, and today heard from Don Harris, who happens to serve on our board, who has a few different credentials. He's a 39-year teacher and within those 39 years, six years as a principal. He's a member of our Board of Directors, Chair of his board in Bloomfield, and Chair of the RESC in the Hartford area, and a member of the African Affairs Commission. Don spoke to them today about what it was like to hire on trips down south back in the 60s and 70s, in terms of bringing teachers of color to districts that need to be represented, better represented in their classroom based on their student population. And he spoke to the retention of those individuals as well. So many different facets in terms of the Praxis exam coming into play, the higher education institutions in our state and how they are, how they're bringing in students to even think about going into teaching. So, and where do you do that? Do you start, you know, certainly at the lower grade levels and the elementaries and the high schools, or do you wait until they come through your doors, they hire at institutions, and then don't come through your doors at the higher education institutions? So more going on there, but those are some of the considerations that were heard today. More?
More. There are a series of committees that were established by Brendan Sharkey, the Speaker of the House, looking at, MORE stands for Municipal Opportunities for Regional Efficiencies. And you can make some other words out of those acronyms as well. There are just a lot of subcommittees looking at many of the same issues, looking at issues around regionalization of services. There's one that's specifically focused on special education. As we all know, while it might be more cost-effective to deliver more services regionally, state and federal law requires that we begin by looking at what is the least restrictive environment for each individual child. So you begin by looking at their neighborhood school. There are, one of the subcommittees is looking at size of school districts, and actually the data shows us that, particularly data from some other states that have established minimum school district size, there is not necessarily a cost savings based on consolidating districts. So there's a lot of examination of these issues. There's examination of how can districts share services, how can districts and municipalities share services, and what we try to bring to those discussions is information on what districts are already doing, rather than try and reinvent the wheel and set a state-level requirement, make legislators more aware of what's already happening in communities like New Canaan. And there is a lot going on, very much tailored to the needs of districts within a particular area, or the needs and strengths of a board and municipality, and their ability to work together. So it is an area where we are trying hard to make sure that there is not a legislatively mandated, one-size-fits-all, here's the template that you all need to use. So this is an area, since I know you have some successful municipal board cooperative efforts, that you can help, to the extent your legislators aren't aware of that, celebrate that with them, and let them know how it's working and how it's saving the community money, or develop, or not necessarily always saving money, but delivering services more effectively. Yep, if you want to look now, we're going to jump to the document entitled 2015 Legislative Workshop, and on page four, these are several, we're going to talk about several bills that were considered during the last legislative session that were not ultimately adopted. This means they are, have a high likelihood of coming back in the next session. That's what happens. Legislation keeps coming around until either someone gets worn out or it gets adopted by the legislature and signed by the governor. So the first one concerned the collection and reporting of data related to special education expenditures. This was, it passed both houses, but was vetoed by the governor. Now, you might at first think, oh, it's a good thing it got vetoed, it'd just be more data collection, there's already too much data that nobody looks at. But the backstory on this is, the motivation behind this bill was, came from the House Chair of the Education Committee, Andy Fleishman, who wants to try and address the special education excess cost formula and actually distribute more money, and that would also mean we have to eliminate the cap on that formula first.
Have more money.
And we have to have more money. But the goal, the ultimate goal behind this is, he wanted to be able to look not just at when a child costs four and a half times your average per pupil expenditure, but go down to, as far down as twice your average per pupil expenditure, and provide some level of state support for those costs. So the motive is good, and therefore, this would be a case where we would have to say, all right, if you need the data broken down that way, it is for an ultimately positive goal. So we would expect that that, particularly since it's an issue championed by the House Chair of the Education Committee, that that will come back this year.
It may look a little different.
Right.
Seat belts. Yeah, to that extent, though, we did hear from CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, in terms of their, some of their legislative proposals, and as you'll see at the top of page, just about at the top of page five, what they're bringing forward is to bring the threshold at two times the district's average per pupil, or at $25,000, whichever is, which whatever, which is ever less and would fully fund the state's portion. We again don't anticipate this is going to be the ultimate answer either, but there's a proposal out there. The next bill directly on, or the next topic directly under there was not a bill that went forward last year, but is something that's come forward nationally. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration made remarks on, just the beginning of this month, regarding, just clarifying some of their statements on seat belts. So now they're saying that specifically, so NHTSA policy is that every child on every school bus should have a three-point seat belt. And to that extent, we heard remarks from Senator Blumenthal, saying that he expects that we'll hear financial concerns about this, and that really the concerns should be beyond that at this point in time. We are charged, as your association, in looking at things like mandates for you. So we do look at financial concerns. While we would be supportive of this effort, we have to be concerned about the implementation of it, what resources are out there for you all to utilize, and how you're handling this type of action now. What, you know, what's currently, what actions are you taking with your school buses now? Do you own buses? Are you having a service? How old are your buses? When do you expect to turn over your buses? How long do you keep a bus? There are a number of considerations. And then, you know, a lot of, some of the work that the MORE Commission is looking at is, you know, where can we combine resources with student transportation? So there are school districts that are looking to share those services. So, you know, you get into a contract cycle, there's a lot of considerations for this bill. So this is not law at this point, it is just a consideration that they're going to be working towards, and we need information from you all in terms of what, how this would impact you, implementation-wise. There was a law passed in 2010 that set forth some resources and also set forth some policy in terms of training students how to use a seat belt. The funding resource was for sales tax, reimbursement of your sales tax, should you buy buses with belts.
Student data privacy. This was legislation that did not pass the House and Senate last year, but it addressed contracts that municipalities and boards of education have with internet service providers, website providers, and would require certain language in those agreements related to the use of personal student information. Many boards, and I Many boards, and I don't know exactly what your policies are, but many boards have addressed this through policy at the local level. Obviously, as technology continues to change, as the abilities of hackers to access all of our information, this continues to be an area of significant concern. Again, the question is, how do we best implement this in light of the fact that there are existing contracts in place that you'd need to, you know, perhaps modify in order to incorporate some specific language that was adopted by the legislature? But I think it's something that's on everyone's radar as they look at any sort of agreement they're entering into with, with testing companies or, or anyone else. I think the next set of issues relate to the Program Review and Investigations Committee. This is a committee, a standing committee of the legislature that conducts a variety of studies. One of the studies they are conducting this year has to do with regional cooperation between local and regional boards of education. So you've got, you've got a committee of the legislature working on this, and you've also got multiple task forces. And where that all comes out in the mix, I think we'd just have to say, stay tuned.
There's, there will be a public hearing, not a public hearing, there was already a public hearing. There will be a final report issued by Program Review Investigation, probably by December 16.
And what they do is issue a report, and then the various committees of cognizance would have to take parts of that report and decide whether or not they want to pursue specific legislation. And to, to wrap up, funding. First, an update on the Connecticut Coalition for Justice in Education Funding. This is the group that has challenged the adequacy of state funding for public education in Connecticut. That case was filed as CJF versus RHEL. That gives you an idea of how long that case has been pending. It will go to trial in January of 2016. However, knowing, they expect the trial itself to last several months. Any trial that lasts several months, it will take more than several months before we have a decision from the judge. And inevitably, whatever side loses in that decision, there will be an appeal to the appellate court, which will then transfer the case to the Connecticut Supreme Court. So we are looking at many more years of litigation before there's any answer through the court system. In the meantime, as you know, the state fiscal situation continues to be a challenge. The good news for public education is, despite the severe fiscal constraints, public education has not been a target by either the governor or legislators for cuts. Clearly, there haven't been, well, it, overall, clearly there have not been the increases that there need to be. There are, there is a proposal to reduce the amount of funding in the transportation grant. Remember, that's one of those capped grants, so you reduce the funding further and you get even less than you're already anticipating. There were some reductions in ECS, but those had to do with charter school slots that were not filled. So that was actually, those weren't grants to local school districts, those were funds that were not going to need to be expended by the state. The fact that you aren't a target at the moment doesn't give you any comfort for tomorrow because there are only so many places you can look to cut in the state budget. There are many advocates for looking at the state and the size of the state workforce. I would say that in terms of the State Department of Education, they have been decimated in terms of staff over the past 10 years. Due to retirements, due to positions not being filled when people retire, they no longer have the personnel to provide support to districts. They, they have the bare amount of personnel they need to comply with federal and state laws, but they don't have the kind of, of support that was previously there. So that remains a concern for us. With that, I don't want to predict what the special session, we can probably predict that the special session will be held the week of December 7. I don't want to predict what the outcome will be. I don't anticipate any drastic education cuts. Obviously, if there were cuts to municipal aid, that has a spillover impact, especially as, you, as in many districts, are anticipating perhaps a special education expenditure that exceeds what was, what was originally budgeted. And that's unfortunately fairly common. So with that, we want your questions, your issues that you are interested in pursuing, so that we can, as these issues come up, we'll know, oh yes, we need to talk to New Canaan about that.
Thank you very much for coming. I think, you know, many of us here have had some ongoing questions and concerns about sort of what's been going on at the state level. And I'm sure that our concerns are different than sort of other areas of the state. So, you know, I don't know how much time you've spent with the, sort of the Fairfield County school boards, but it's nice to see you. I've only been on the board two years, so it's nice to, I mean, I've seen you at other events, but thank you for coming. Let me open it up to questions, and then, you know, we'll move on from there. Sherry?
Sure. You started your presentation by saying that it's very important that the state legislature hears from local boards of education. So could you maybe share some best practices that you've seen with other boards of education? How do they stay abreast of all the, you know, all this proposed legislation? And how then do they weigh in, provide their feedback, et cetera?
Terrific question. We send out communications during the legislative session, on average, once a week. If, if there are hearings happening more frequently, we only get three days' notice of a hearing. So we have to, you know, the good news is, we're not stuffing envelopes in the office anymore to send out these notices. That's what we did when I first went to work at CADE. So we send out an email and say, here's the public hearing, and here are the, the issues that are going to be considered. So you can come to the Capitol. First of all, we can, you should all be getting those, those emails, and the new board members, if we don't have your new, your contact information, we need to get that. So those go out, you can unsubscribe, we discourage you from doing that. But you're automatically on that distribution. So you could come to the Capitol and testify. Now, we realize that is often a logistical nightmare. That could involve 12 hours at the Capitol before you actually get to testify. Just, again, I'm not discouraging you from doing this, but this is the reality. On the other hand, you could come, and if you can devote three hours and maybe have a side conversation outside of the hearing room with your legislator, leave your written testimony, that's incredibly valuable. That's, you know, because by the time they get to the eighth hour of the public hearing, that individual conversation you had may in fact be way, carry a lot more weight than testifying to a couple of people that are still left. So you can send written testimony. We can help you make sure you know how to get that. Our alerts will tell you on the bottom, you know, how to submit email testimony. You can contact your, so you get this alert, and you, you see that there's an issue that concerns you, you can contact your legislator.
I would encourage you to have them here.
And that's the next thing.
Invite all of them here. You've heard from us, you have maybe a few issues of your own in here, and we think that's the best.
Yeah.
And then encourage them to be in touch with us, or you all to be in touch with us. We work best when we work with you for them, you know, with them.
So inviting them to a board of education meeting, that's definitely a best practice. Best to do that, if you can, in January before the session starts, because they have a long commute, and they have a lot of public hearings and committee meetings, and so it becomes a logistical challenge for them to be in the community. Come to our day on the Hill on March 3.
2nd.
2nd? It's a Wednesday. And it's the first Wednesday in March. We have legislative leaders come speak to the board members and superintendents at the Bushnell. We encourage you to have set up appointments. We do it on a Wednesday because most of the committees meet on Wednesday, and there might be a legislative session. So it's a day when lots of legislators are in Hartford. We can't predict six months in advance what committees will be meeting, but it's, it's usually a, a busy day. We encourage you to make an appointment with your legislator. If they're not in, you leave them a note saying you came to see them. That's a good, they like to know that you, that you reached out to them. Does that help?
Yes, just a follow-on question to that. So in, in regards to communication best practices, so we currently have a practice, we will selectively communicate to our parents on proposed legislation that especially affects our district. For example, we send an email on the uniform regional calendar. Is that any other communication best practices that you've seen in terms of communicating to the community?
That's, that's a great idea. Communicate through your, your PTAs or PTOs. If there are issues around funding, or, or additional mandates in particular, that you're going to communicate on, let your municipal officials know that you're communicating. Even if they don't choose to, to take up that particular issue, at least they know you're doing what you can do to try and reduce the influx of new requirements.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question or two, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Sherry mentioned the regional calendar. That was, there was quite a bit of discussion and debate about that two years ago, and then it was pushed off last year by a, by a year. Is there any more discussion about changing that, or adjusting that, or changing the requirements around any of that?
We don't see a willingness among the legislators to do that. It's important to, that's a great issue of where knowing a little bit about the context about which that came about helps maybe balance how you see it. It began with the notion that the legislature was going to establish a statewide calendar, the legislature. Now, I know how much fun it is to establish a calendar, district by district or region by region. I could only imagine how wonderful it would be to have the legislature come up with this. So they, we were successful in persuading them that that probably wasn't a way to handle this issue. And again, the issues stem from, well, you can better coordinate transportation, and there was also professional development, which of course, now we're not doing as much of that big professional development, we're doing more embedded, so the calendar really doesn't matter. Be that as it may, so, so they were willing to go to the point of, all right, every region should have their own calendar, and rather than the state decide in each region, would let the RESCs coordinate that, and at least that's a, that's a place where every board has representation at your regional educational service center. So while it's not ideal...
They built in five flex days, as I recall.
Right.
Pre-served on our, on the task force in our...
For that one, yes.
So the five flex days was seen as a benefit by virtue of them looking first, I think, at three, or no more than three. So two more was a victory.
So it's, so it's not as bad as it could have been.
That's, that's the message.
And there's also flexibility on that start date, in terms of the actual, you know, there's a, I don't know how many days, I'm thinking three or five or something like that.
There are five flex days.
But we absolutely agree with you.
No.
Is this ideal? No. Is it what we would have, we encourage the legislature to let locally elected officials make decisions within their communities. So I, I think...
The task force wasn't a task force on, you know, whether we should do this or not, was a task force on implementation, implementation. So it was already determined that this is what happened.
So it wasn't if, it was how.
Exactly.
And you helped moderate the how quite a bit.
That's exactly it.
There's one other question, I'm sorry. On the national scene, we're reading a lot about ESEA and No Child Left Behind and the reauthorization. Can you give a, just a few seconds, just a high-level summary, kind of with the significant changes that might impact us on a school level? Just because when we read about policy and things, that's sort of dominating the headlines right now.
Right. So we have a summary that, from the National School Boards Association, we actually have a conference call tomorrow afternoon at 4:00, where they're going to be able to fill in more of the details, because the actual bill language was not going to be released until today. And it will be a bill that's hundreds, if not thousands, of pages long. Basically, there is still going to be a requirement for a statewide accountability system, and testing in every grade, three through eight, as well as a high school assessment. The flexibility will be to the states to determine what assessment instruments they will use. So it's moving away from the waiver for your test and to a, a state-driven decision. Let's see, what are the other big changes?
Is there a decoupling of the teacher evaluation?
It, it would, again, we haven't seen the exact language. It would give states more flexibility around evaluation and assessment. We obviously have also state law and state guidelines in place. Whether, whether those will be likely to be changed is, is a matter of great speculation right now. There certainly is, is advocacy on both sides of that issue, or on all sides, because I think there are definitely more than, more than two sides to that. I had another, there was another point about the assessment.
Not the SAT part?
Anyway, that's, those are, those are the big, the big issues. Money following, Title I money following the child is not in this reauthorization. So it, it is somewhat of a, there's still a federal accountability requirement, but there is more state-level decision-making. And we will be getting out to you through, through our email sometime on Wednesday, a, as much of a summary as, as we have after our call tomorrow afternoon.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you. Just a clarification, I know when we're asking about the regional calendar, and you say it was, it was going to be implemented, it was pushed off. Has an official date been established about when it actually implements?
The next, the next school year.
That's school year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so our 1617 calendar has already been developed and approved, as you recall. And if you looked down on the agenda, you'll see the 1718 calendar, first read is up for, I'm hoping for next week, and we'll talk about it a little bit more. It's, those five flex days are the key. So thank you for your efforts in making sure that we had at least a week to work with, because there are so many important local considerations around that. So, yeah, we were able, using the five flex days to make it work for next year. And we're still, still sort of working through it for 1718, but I think we'll be able to get there as well. Those days are the key, so thank you.
Yep. It really, and believe me, I know the Durham Fair doesn't impact you, but they're my neighboring community where I live, and, you know, these are the types of things that...
It's important.
Are important to communities.
Right. Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a quick, I have a quick question, or I hope is a quick question. And it's a little bit in the weeds, but it's, it's sort of topical this year because of the, the ability for the state to use the SAT as its 11th grade or high school testing under the testing mandate. You know, there's, there's some concern in this district about the fact that, you know, it's a changeover year with that test, so kids are going to be taking the ACT, the old SAT, and, you know, there hasn't been a decision on what's going to be happening with this new SAT. And I know that there's, you know, if we can promote something as a district, and, you know, have you have the, you know, education director's ear, I think, I think I speak for a lot of parents in this community, is that they would like that test to be held confidential for this, this year's students, because it'll be the only test, you know, some kids won't be taking that test as a college entrance test.
Right. And that is an issue that I actually have discussed with the Commissioner, having heard this concern previously. They are still working with the College Board, I mean, with, the state is in, is under, has entered into a contract with the College Board for the SAT to be the 11, and it is currently under federal law, and we believe under the reauthorization, it has to be an 11th grade assessment. So it has to be, there's not an option to assess in another high school year. So 11th grade assessment, we have a waiver that allows us to use the SAT, so for next spring... spring, we have to administer in Connecticut the SAT. We don't, we don't have another option. The reauthorization will allow flexibility, so you wouldn't need a waiver, you could just say, we're going to use the SAT. Does that, and does that mean that Connecticut in the future might choose to use the ACT? But I hear your concern about the, the issue, and I know there is a, an issue with some colleges requiring the reporting of all scores, I've discussed that issue with the commissioner. So, she is aware and sensitive to these issues, and it's a matter of trying to balance the current requirements of federal law, what, what flexibility the reauthorized ESEA will give states, and, and, and our negotiations with the college board as a state.
Have you, has, has the commissioner, or have you heard any indication of when a decision? Because, you know, we're getting, we're now almost in, you know, the end of the year, we've got a few months, and there are families, this is impacting, I mean, I'm sure we're not the only community starting to get, you know, high school students a little anxious about this decision, and so, I think, you know, in order to prepare parents and the community across the state, you know, it'd be helpful for, you know, I'm sure Dr. Letty, and for the entire district to get a decision, so at least we can prepare parents.
Well, the decision is definitely, the SAT will be administered to all 11th graders. What happens to those scores is what's still in discussion.
And they, and we don't have any idea when that'll be?
No. But we, we will press for sooner rather than later. I, I hear your concern, and, and no, you are not the only district...
I'm sure we're not.
...that has raised this.
Well, your task force is meeting fairly regularly.
We meet once a week. Sometimes it seems like we meet every other day, but we spend a lot of quality time together, yes.
So, in, in a recent issue, I guess you would call it, of the student assessment news, there was quite a bit of information about the SAT and upcoming webinars. So, hopefully, there is, they're starting to narrow the focus on the questions that need to be answered, and maybe with some reminders and some quick discussions up there could help to, for them to understand the urgency of this question, because it is important. You know, students want to put their best foot forward when they're applying for their colleges, and if they feel that this test is, if they know this is going to be reported out to schools, it will make a difference, could have an impact. You know, our students work very hard and prepare, start preparing very early for college entrance and the application process, and if we're doing something that adds stress to their lives, we want to find a way to try to relieve that stress as quickly as possible. So, we appreciate any help you can give us in helping others to understand the urgency of this question, the importance of this, because as, as we know, the juniors, junior year already is tough enough, you know, and so, adult decisions shouldn't be adding more stress to the lives of our students here.
And that is how we ended up, again, the, the history, which, which you have all lived through, that's how we ended up with the SAT waiver request from the, to the federal government, because there was a concern about the over, the burdensome amount of testing on 11th graders, who are taking SAT, ACT, they were taking smarter balance, AP exams, as well as just regular classroom assessments. And so, this was an effort to at least alleviate, for many students, one test.
Just to add to that, I do know there are parents and students who don't even consider the SAT, they go straight to the ACT. How will, do you know if that will have any impact, or can you bring that message to the commissioner as well, that this will indeed add another test, if that was one they weren't even considering?
She is aware of that. It wouldn't be an additional test, because what the, what the SAT is doing is it's replacing the smarter balance. So, they're not taking smarter balance, they're taking SAT.
I guess I'm thinking...
It's a higher stakes test.
Potentially, yes.
I think that's the way you have to look at it, is that we were trying to, I, I think what the, the goal was good, but they replaced a, you know, for the district, we, we care about those results, but you replaced a district, something we care about, how we do as a district, and if we're teaching the things our kids should know, and, and being able to look and help our teachers, and, and for parents to see how their kids are tracking. But now, now that test has been replaced with a very high-stakes test for juniors. So...
I just can add to that, too, is just also, in taking, you know, usually that's like a, a choice that you make with a child, like, you know, some children test better with ACT, some with SAT, and I'm going through that with my son right now, and it's, you know, we're, we're leaning towards doing the ACT, because that's more his mindset, and now he's going to have to take the other test, and then those scores get reported, because a lot of kids just take the ACT, and they don't take SATs, and that's the score that goes to the colleges, so it's...
Right. Now, only certain, just so we're clear, my understanding is that only certain colleges require that you report all your SAT scores. Some still allow, most allow you to have score choice.
Right, but...
But I, I understand that it is a, a group of highly selective colleges that do impose that requirement.
So, any other questions?
No, thank you very much. It's so great to have you down here and understanding.
We really appreciate being invited, so if, you know, if it's helpful for us to come again, and email us, we're, we're, we really would, would like to strengthen this connection, and we appreciate your interest in these issues.
And we encourage you to get together with other districts, and maybe a bunch, a bunch of districts, and we'll come down and do a real big conversation.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're moving on to the action item section of the budget, and the, having the first read of the 201617 budget assumptions. Dr. Letty?
Sure. Do you want to move first and then vote, and then present, or do you want to present?
I, I think, I think we should present first, before we move to approve the first read.
That sounds good. And I have one other, would you like me to do it from the podium, or are you comfortable? Can I talk from here? All right. Thank you. And just as, as a very brief reminder, with something, some items such as new policies, and when we do our district goals, when we do our, our budget assumptions, as I'll review tonight, we do a first reading and a second reading. The first reading is kind of a general overview that I'll give, and certainly welcome to engage in dialogue, but then, we let it sit for a period of time, in this case, it'll be a week, and next week, we'll go, we'll look for the vote and the second reading. And that gives you, and the public and others, a chance to read through it and share any feedback they might have. So, generally, this, we'll all spend as much time as you like going through it, but then, as we go into the second reading, that's where we could have more interactive discussion and conversation. We wouldn't vote tonight, we would move and approve it as a first read, and then leave it essentially, what they say, on the floor, if I have that correct, and then we would wind up going for the second reading next week and continue the discussion. And we do that, again, with things like the district goals and policies, the budget assumptions, and other things, because it gives that period of sort of consideration, so we don't, we don't rush into those things. So, I gave you two handouts tonight. The first one is just another copy of our district goals and objectives, the 1516 district goals and objectives. You'll see in the upper left-hand corner, we first presented those for reading on July 20th, and then had our second reading on August 17th. I gave you these, I know you've probably gotten enough copies at this point, but I'm going to keep giving them out when appropriate, because it really does guide the work that we do. And it's the budget, not just the goals that we have here, but the objectives under each of the goals, that really flow into the budget assumptions and related priorities document that I'm going to review with you. So, I just think it's always good to sort, to have it handy, to be able to refer to those objectives, because again, the goal set that lofty target, but the objectives really talk about how we'll measure our progress towards those targets each year. The goals generally stay the same, but the objectives change based on our progress and as we continue to move forward. So, you have that. If you go to the other landscape, printed goals, budget assumptions, and related priorities, this is, again, for our 1617 budget development process. We use this document externally to talk about our, our vision, our values, our beliefs as an organization, as we're developing our budget, but we also use it internally, because the, all of our budget requests have a tie-in, one way or the other, to each of these budget assumptions that we have here. You know, we, we really look at the, and I'll be saying this a couple of times, too, but we look at our budget not just as a funding document, it really is a policy document. It's through our budget that we identify what our priorities are, we fund those priorities, we certainly budget to maintain in certain ways, and you'll see things about facilities and other pieces in here, but we also make sure that what we value and believe in as a school district is funded and represented through that budget process. So, I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights here, I'm not, certainly not going to read this document to you tonight, but I'll hit a couple of highlights and go through it. Certainly opportunity for questions, and then, again, we can pick it up next week. So, our first goal is to increase student learning as measured by multiple and varied assessments, to assure all students graduate prepared for a dynamic and complex global society. And that's goal one of our district goals and objectives. So, underneath that, we have a number of priorities. A, preparing all students to excel in a dynamic and complex global society requires a sustained focus on and investment in curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And see how that is a priority in the belief statements as we go through. So, for instance, when we get into budget assumptions, district curriculum must be continually updated and revised, with a focus on emphasizing depth of understanding, application of knowledge through inquiry and problem-solving, higher-order thinking, cross-disciplinary learning, informed and ethical use of technology, and authentic learning opportunities, both in and out of school. And then, Roman numeral four, successful 21st century learners and workers demonstrate critical and creative thinking skills, and the ability to raise, analyze, and investigate meaningful questions, and present solutions, both as individuals and as members of a productive group. These expectations must be embedded in curriculum, instruction, and assessment system-wide. So, we use, that's just an example of how we use kind of these beliefs in order to identify curriculum-writing proposals and work that we're doing. So, continuing on, still under goal one, a highly qualified and effective staff is the foundation of our district's efforts to continuously improve student performance. Highly qualified and effective administrators, teachers, and staff, sufficient to meet all internal and external expectations, are the cornerstone of our district's efforts to continuously improve student performance. And then, three, the student academic support team provides timely and responsive instruction and interventions to students K-12, and also provides professional learning to colleagues through formal and embedded opportunities. And that speaks about how we maintain our highly qualified and effective staff. C, under goal one, district resources must be purposefully distributed and dedicated to areas that drive student performance. Maintaining class-size guidelines and requisite staffing levels through all programs enables us to meet and exceed state and district student performance standards, and the appropriately high expectations of the New Canaan community. And I think we heard that loudly and clearly in our last conversation around our staffing and enrollment projections, and the board's strong desire to maintain class-size guidelines, and to make sure that we are budgeting within those. Three, the continued investment, investment in the integration and implementation of science, technology, engineering, and math initiatives, K-12, in alignment with state, national, and international frameworks, provides the foundation to ensure all students graduate with the technological knowledge and skills required to succeed in today's dynamic and complex global society. So, as you're looking at these individual pieces, you'll see, you'll notice probably that each one ties directly to an objective that was listed under our goals, and whether it's the objective as listed, or what could possibly be the next step in that objective, the one is meant to inform the other. And goal two, our goal two is to improve achievement, service, and relationships through communication that is responsive, clear, timely, and inclusive. Responsive, clear, timely, and inclusive communication is the result of purposeful planning and thoughtful action. Continued implementation of the updated New Canaan Public Schools website ensures it's responsive to the needs of all stakeholders, and enables it to become an effective vehicle for timely coordinated communications to the school, district, town, and world. And under B, effective communication with families is essential to creating the conditions where all students can excel. Continually exploring and implementing new and effective ways to actively communicate with families helps develop and strengthen the partnership between school and home. So, again, you see, value statements can drive this, drive the budget assumptions. Goal three is to promote and support innovative and exemplary research-based professional practices in order to continuously enhance teaching and extend learning. Things such as consistent access to meaningful coaching, professional learning, and peer collaboration at all levels is critical to attracting, developing, and retaining highly qualified and effective administrators, teachers, and staff. And I'm going to take a minute to announce that the town council unanimously approved the Saks renovation and expansion project. I try to discourage texting during meetings, but I'm getting away with it this time. I saw it out of the corner of my eye, all right. You get good at it. And then, the third bullet, going back, this is around promoting and supporting innovative and exemplary research-based instructional practice. Bullet three, to maintain, maintain the fidelity and effectiveness of the teacher evaluation and professional learning model, we call TEPL, by providing differentiated professional learning, reviewing and adjusting the evaluator-evaluate ratios wherever necessary, and maintaining a system of collaborative document creation, storage, and retrieval. I asked Patrice when she was here about the decoupling of the teacher evaluation and the testing, the assessment system, but fortunately, under TEPL, we have a waiver from the state from that, so we don't use the smarter balance or the other statewide assessment systems as part of our doc, our assessment process with our, our teachers, our evaluation, unless the evaluator and the teacher agree that's the right measure to use based on the work that they're doing. So, we have flexibility in that already, just as a, a side note. Goal four, on page three, is to promote an environment that fosters respect, ethical behavior, and responsible global citizenship. Healthy, safe, and secure learning, work, and transportation environments are integral to the educational success and social-emotional development of our students. Student and staff safety, security, and well-being are essential to maximize learning and performance. Continued investment in security initiatives through school and town budgets is critical for this ongoing work. Two, maintaining the current structure of campus monitor positions is a critical component of our school safety initiative. In identifying ways the current structure can increase its effectiveness, will provide further safety and security to our schools. And, let's see, and five there, the existing level and structure of student support services composed of school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, kids and crisis counselor, and school resource officers provides effective and responsive mental health and crisis response teams district-wide. And then, B, under this, the maintenance and improvement of school facilities is a sound financial practice that results in healthy, safe, and productive learning and work environments. Facilities and technology are a vital component of the district's mission, and must be regularly maintained and updated in support of student learning. And finally, goal five, promote and practice good stewardship for all district resources in a manner that supports safe and healthy environments, and optimizes student learning. Adhering to both unfunded and funded federal and state mandates is a continuous challenge, we heard a little bit about that earlier tonight. To do so effectively requires appropriate, yet customized implementation of mandates, and sufficient resources so as to meet legal mandates while consistently reflecting community principles and standards in all that we do. Recent mandates include, and there's a list of them there, that list could be a bit longer, but we hit the highlights on a few. Certainly, safety and security continues to be a top priority for us. The new high-stakes assessments, we heard some conversation about those tonight, and then certainly, the state and federal data reporting, and the onerous expectations around that, where we're reporting around districts, school, student performance, student behavior, school climate, financial data, human resources, and personnel, it's quite a long, extensive list of the data reporting that we do. So, we do always keep an eye on mandates, we always look to leverage them based on work that we're currently doing, and find ways to make sure that they can, they reflect our values and beliefs as an educational system. We essentially look at them and look for the, the leverage point in those mandates, and how can we incorporate those into our, into our system, so that it can be a positive thing, and improve the work that we're doing, and not be something that is working counter to what we're doing. Can be a challenge, but that's our focus. Under B, educational excellence requires significant and sustained fiscal, financial investment. A fiscally sound, prudent, and transparent approach will be... A fiscally sound, prudent, and transparent approach will be followed in budget development with a focus on maximizing the use of resources to ensure continued achievement and success. An effective and efficient stewardship of resources honors community trust, responds to community needs, and is part of providing a sound return on investment. Therefore, efficiencies should be identified and reported on an ongoing basis. We spent the Tuesday and Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving, the Cabinet met with each of the individual principals and each of the cost center managers to talk about their budget requests and proposals, and we talked not just about new requests, but also about efficiencies that they've been able to identify and find within their schools, and as we get into the workshop and then into the initial budget presentation, you'll see quite a bit more of those. And then C, meeting the community's high and increasing expectations for responsive services, excellence in educational outcomes, and fiscal prudence requires a forward-looking and collaborative approach to goal-setting, reporting, and funding. To ensure that long-term capital and insurance costs are addressed to meet the needs of all stakeholders, we will continue to work collaboratively with the town bodies and their representatives in these efforts. And of course, as we saw with, tonight with the Statement of Accounts, clearly communicated, accurate, and timely financials are, are essential to the stewardship of the district resources. So, believe it or not, that was the abridged version, but quite a bit of time, effort, thought goes into developing these assumptions, some, excuse me, some will look familiar to the assumptions that we used last year, many are modified, adjusted, and updated in different ways. You know, as we look at our, our budget, and we start to really sort of hone it down into the proposal that you're going to be seeing in the upcoming months, this is one of the ways that we make sure that the requests are aligned with our district goals, that are, they're in keeping with our practices, and help to continue to move our district forward as we go, both proposals for existing programs, and also where we look at some new, new opportunities that might exist. So I am certainly open and happy to take any questions.
Why don't we, I think, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very extensive document, and I don't think we've had a lot of time to digest it, so I think if everybody's all right, let's, why don't we move and second this as a first read, and then we can open up to any conversation, or if, you know, people feel like they need more time to, to review this, then we can, you know, kind of take the two, the, the week, wait, no, the two weeks.
One week.
One week, consolidate, you know, your concerns and, or questions, or any comments you have, and, and bring them back next week. So why don't we, if I could get someone to move to, move to approve for a first read the New Canaan Public Schools budget assumptions for the 2016-2017's year? Sherry?
It's a moved.
May I have a second? Tom? Okay, so we don't need to vote, and let me open it up, if anybody has any questions at this point, or we can-
I just had a comment, and I just wanted to thank you again for going through this in such detail, and I see that there has been some new verbiage added around this, and the fact that we're really basing it upon what our district goals are, and we have a large budget, and I think it's important for the public to know that we really take this seriously and look at each item, and that only spend what's necessary to achieve the results that we want to have a premier school system, a school district, so thank you for, for that, because I could see there's a lot of work that went into this.
Thank you. Yeah, and of course, as all good things, it was teamwork, and I want to, the Cabinet, Darlene, Jill, you know, certainly Gary and Joanne, everyone read through, contributed, and said, "Maybe this, let's reframe that," so it really was, was teamwork putting through. Thank you, Senator.
Any other?
But I agree with you that I think you need a little more time to digest.
So what would you think, would you like me to collect anything during the week and, and be a central, or do you want Tori to do that, or how do you want to, if there's things during the week that the board members-
Sure, if there are questions, I think, send to Tori-
Okay.
And to me directly, what I'll do in any response is I'll send them to all nine members of the board, so if anyone has any specific questions, you know, they can certainly send to me, and when I, in reply, I'll just make sure everyone has them, so that, you know, we can keep the conversation going forward.
Sure.
And happy to engage in any sort of dialogue at the next meeting as well.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, Deanna.
All right, well then, I guess since there's no further questions, why don't we move to, may I have a motion to adjourn to exec-
Announcements.
Oh, sorry, announcements, sorry, I missed a whole section.
No, that's okay, it's a short section.
Announcements in future meetings, Dr. Lutzey.
Sure, so we do have, we have a meeting next week, and then we have another meeting the week after that, so we do have, we have three meetings in a row, and that's sort of our, our warm-up or tune-up to budget time, I think, as we go into it. Next week, we will be looking again at the budget assumptions and going through that as a second read. We also, as I mentioned before, I've been working with the regional calendar for 17-18, so I think I'll have something at least as a first reading to put that on the table, on the floor, for some discussion, and then that can stay there, it doesn't need to be turned around very quickly, but by our policy, we want to be moving forward with the 17-18, and I think parents appreciate the fact that we're, we try to stay, you know, a year and a half, two years ahead in our calendar, so that they can plan and what have you, so at least be able to put something on the table. And I did mean what I said before with Patrice and Sheila, that those five FLEX days really make the difference for us, as we look at the regional calendar and adapting it to, you know, what our practice has been here in New Canaan, that, the two breaks, the week in February, then, and the week in April, and, you know, being able to sort, to make it all fit. So it looks like we're very close, we've got to make a few decisions around a couple of days, but, you know, I'll have that here at least for a discussion, and then, you know, as, as we, we learn quickly, you don't get married to a calendar until it's gone through its second read and it's in place, so we can have as much discussion around that as need be. The, and we also have a K-12 world language presentation next week, Lizette has been working to put something together, we looked at, again, at our board, our district goals, and as you know, one of the district goals has been for years around the development of second, of world languages, we started that when David Abbey was superintendent, and we were implementing the FLESS program, and that, objectives around that goal have evolved through the, through the years, and Lizette's going to be able to give us some feedback around the success of the program, we do have our FLESS program in place, as you know, I'm still, we, we're so used to it here in New Canaan, when we talk to people in other districts, they'll stop us after a minute and say, "Tell me again what FLESS stands for?" It's foreign language in the elementary schools, and we've been doing it with great success here on, with Lizette's leadership, so she'll be here to share with us some stories and some feedback about that program. And then the following meeting on the 14th will be our, is our budget workshop, and we'll be talking in more depth, and, and share more information about that next week, about the format of that, and how it'll, how it'll work out. Typically, that's a, a large meeting night with the, all the administrators, principals, department heads, others, and we just work through sort of some of the ideas around the budgeting, which is why approving the budget assumptions next week is so important. And I think that's enough. Oh, and then, of course, just as an announcement, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, we have an art show opening here at the high school, from five to seven, with our students, they're putting, things are starting to go up now, you can take a sneak peek later, and then afterwards, I think at seven o'clock, there's an orchestra concert here in the auditorium, and of course, you and the public is all welcome to join us. As we get into the holiday season, the concerts will become more and more frequent, and orchestra kicked it off last year, too, I think, the beginning, beginning of December, so should be great.
Okay, all right. So now we can move to the, if we could get a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statute's 1-210B, the matter to be discussed is confidential documents and attorney-client privilege. May I have a motion?
It's a moved.
Sure, may I have a second? Maria? Okay, all those in favor? All those in favor? It's unanimous? Okay, so we're adjourned to executive session.